This video is brought to you as a public service by Salty Live. Saltilive.com, producer of instructional, commercial, and personal videos.
Thursday night at White County Historical Society. John Pruitt, who many of you probably remember if you've ever watched WSB TV or WXIA TV, will be speaker at the Historical Society. He's coming to tell us about some of the things that he did as a commentator or whatever, anchorman and that type of thing. So everybody's invited to come out 7:30 tonight to the Historical Society and welcome John Pruitt.
Well, Ms. Judy, I'd love to be there. We've got some eating events that night. I know the Rotary Raffles that night.
Scambling money.
I'm sorry, you're out of order.
We still have some tickets to sell.
Can we just listen from the pulpit? Okay, all right. Well, folks, we're going to get started. Commissioner O'Brien should be here any moment. I want to, I do, laying all jokes aside, I am going to be respectful. I'm going to change our agenda real quick and I think, hopefully you'll understand in just a moment. If you don't have a copy of our agenda, we do have extra copies up here on the table. Let me start off officially. This is a work session for the White County Board of Commissioners and today is Monday, October 30th. I've actually got 4:32 PM. And what we do here in our work sessions, we actually go business matters into county. We discuss them, as well as I do have a couple of public hearings we'll be conducting tonight. And it gives us an opportunity to kind of ask questions and then over next week or so, we can be back here a week from tonight and we'll officially vote on some of these matters a week from tonight, or this afternoon, a week at 4:30. But I'm going to change the agenda up and we're going to go ahead and do a presentation of a proclamation in honor of the Georgia Retired Educators' Day, which is Sunday, November 5th, 2017. And I'm going to read that and if we would, I know we've got several retired educators with us this evening. If you'd be okay, so inclined, if we could get a picture with you all. And I'd like to stand by Ms. Hunt, since it's her birthday. If that would be agreeable. Ms. Hunt just turned 90, is that correct, Ms. Hunt? You don't want me to, I shouldn't have said that out loud. But happy birthday. Okay, all right. Proclamation by the White County Board of Commissioners, whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 5th, 2017 is Retired Educators' Day in Georgia. And whereas there are more than 110,000 retired educators in Georgia, 27,000 and more of who are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas retired educators in Georgia donate thousands of hours in volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas the retired educators devote their time and, excuse me, putting emphasis on fellowship, service, and support. Whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for the citizens to express their appreciation and the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas community organizations will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now therefore, the White County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim that November 5th, 2017 is Retired Educators' Day in White County. And this, the Board of Commissioners also calls upon the citizens of White County to observe this day in an appropriate manner by honoring retired educators. That's signed by all five commissioners on this board. And would it, can we get a picture with you guys as we present this to you? We would appreciate that. And thank you for your service, all of you. We miss you guys at school, I can go ahead and tell you that. Come on down. If you don't mind. Come on in, it's about you guys. All right, we'll start with Debbie, ladies first. All right, Lee.
Yeah, somehow it's.
Bill, have us some fetching news.
That's right.
Dot com.
Smile pretty. There you go. Thank you a lot.
All right, moving on back to our regular agenda. We do have two public hearings we will be conducting this evening. And I'll give you kind of a synopsis of how these will operate. First, I'll be asking our staff to give a brief synopsis of the application. Secondly, I'll ask a representative or the applicant to speak as to their desires and their reasoning for the reclassification or rezoning. And then third, I'll open the floor up for, give those who are here in support of the application, as well as give an opportunity to those who happen to be here in opposition or to issue any concern regarding the application. And I'll give each one of those ample time. And if we have multiple speakers, please try to keep comments, it's around three minutes. If for some reason we have no comments, whether it's in support or opposition. We do have a standard practice now that I'll issue three calls. And all these are just formal things we have to go through, but we have to make sure our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And then lastly, we will close. And then like I said a little while ago, after these public hearings, a week from tonight or this afternoon, we'll be having a voting meeting at 4:30. And at that time, I'll be asking the board what is their desires regarding these requests. So having said all that, I've spoken enough, let's move on. Item one of our agenda, conduct a public hearing for the land use application filed by Mr. Felix E. Love to request a conditional use permit at 55 Mill Creek Trail, Cleveland, Georgia, 30528. Tax map and parcel 018-011. Total acreage is 2.75 acres and propose use just to place a single-family residence in a for-rent-by-owner program. Present use is R1, which is residential, single-family district. At this time, Mr. John Sale, John, if you want, pull that thing a little further back, that way you might not be quite so intimidating. You, us to you, not you, us. Anyway, go ahead. John, would you give us, for those of you, John is our planning and economic director for White County. John's been with us now about a month-ish. And John comes to us by way of Georgia Power. So we're pleased to have John on board and he has jumped in with both feet. And so far, he's, he came back every single week since we hired him, so this is going to be a good sign. Anyway, John, give us a brief synopsis of our application.
Okay, this is the application for Felix E. Love. The property is in R1 District and will require a conditional use permit from White County Board of Commissioners. The property adjoins R1 Residential Single Family District on the north, south, and east side, and A1 Agricultural Forestry District to the west. Proposed use adjoins Mill Creek Trail and Mill Lane. The White County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map indicates single-family residential. The total acreage is 2.75 acres. The property is supplied with well and subcutane. The planning commission recommends not to approve the conditional use permit.
All right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Sale to begin with? All right, having none. Mr. Love, would you come on down? That's contested on Price is Right, I guess, but give us kind of what your plans are, where you're going with the property and so on.
First, before I get to that, Frankie Martha Singbill taught me in high school at Forest Park. I bought the property with the intent of reselling, because I thought that it was valued more than, than, that it paid for. While I'm waiting for someone to cough up half a million dollars, I was going to rent it out because it's such a fantastic property to rent. I had a friend that did that. I don't think there would have been any problem, but I got a, and we were paying the taxes and doing all the things it was supposed to. But I got a call saying that I needed to do this, get a land use permit. I also live in the neighborhood. I don't want the rules to be changed any more than anyone else, who supposedly my opposition wants the rules to be changed. And I'm sure that's why we recommended that we not do this. And that doesn't upset me in the least. I've asked you permission, however, to continue to rent it until I sell it, which is, which could be tomorrow. And there is a lot of interest in it, which could be tomorrow and it could be a couple months from now. That's as succinct as I can make it, so we won't.
All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Love?
I got one. I noticed that as the president of the Homeowners' Association out there, that in July, that you had, had written a letter to Mr. Matt Booth about a summer situation where they were wanting to rent.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right. He's my next door neighbor and we didn't expect to get any, we were actually trying to see how much authority we had to stop this sort of thing and not wanting to be some sort of policeman or, we wrote the letter, I wrote the letter, I composed and wrote the letter.
Yeah.
Yet he is John.
And so now you're going to do this.
And right, if I was the president, I guess I would have to write myself a letter saying, listen, don't do that. But that's what we did, we said, don't do that, and he still, he continues to do it. Whoever Mr. Booth is, he continues.
Well, you have, you have covenants in your homeowners' association.
Yes, and we were usually.
Everyone expects that, to be here to, to protect their own property.
Right, I understand that. And I wasn't a very good president, I admit, I was, I was lazy. The president we have now is top notch. I don't know if she's had Mr. Booth stop what he's doing or not. I know there's another person in the complex who's doing it too. It's, it's a, it's a problem. It is what it is, as they say.
My question is, is it weekend rental or permanent rental to?
It's not permanent rental. Actually, permanent rental is allowed and if I wanted to rent the property, but I don't want to put somebody in.
So you're going to do weekend rentals to tourists?
Pretty much, yeah. And during the winter.
Can you say that's going on now?
It is going on right now.
Are they paying hotel motel taxes? Do they?
Yes, that was the whole point of me being here, was they wanted to make sure that I was paying hotel motel tax. I'm renting through another company and the company Pinnacle Cabin Rooms is paying the hotel motel taxes.
Well, I guess my question, and this is not pertaining to you, while it's fresh on my mind, I'm at that age that I forget pretty quick as to our staff, do these people that are doing this in this subdivision, are they licensed with a business to do that? And are we collecting hotel motel tax off of those that are doing it now?
Therein lies the problem with vacation rentals, when these management companies manage and rent multiple properties, when you proceed their checks for hotel motel tax, you do not know what specific properties that is from. And if some of y'all were called back a few years ago, we tried to require that they obtain that information and provide that to us. And that was something that they objected to and the board did not require them to provide it at that time. But these management companies, we get a check, we get a form, we don't know what properties they're for.
Well, that's not pertaining to what we're here for now. I don't want to get sidetracked, but I don't want this board to forget what we're discussing.
Well, while we're on that, that Pinnacle, is that, are they here in White County or are they over in Haverchamp County? Or do you know?
I think they're in Haverchamp County, but they've got 52 cabins and a lot of them in White County, I'm sure, and so they're, yeah. That's a question I can't answer.
They do have his license with White County. The technical does, yes.
But I wasn't sure about.
I wouldn't get a sidetrack, it's just when people start.
That's actually the question that brought me here, with whether or not I do.
People are talking about basically tourists, and it kind of, we always think, if you've got tourist accommodations, then there should be, you know, well, they should have a business license for that. And if it is a management company that's doing it, then they probably do have that license. But it's our responsibility to make sure that those properties are, we're collecting hotel motel tax off of those properties too.
Mr. Love, I will make a comment, the property is very beautiful. I mean, it's, it's one of the top 12s that state it's got. It's a gorgeous piece of property, faxing back. And if gentlemen, you have any more comments for Mr. Love, I'm going to allow him to sit down unless you have any more questions this moment on. Mr. Love, feel free to sit down and we'll open the floor up. Just my questions to staff, special condition, conditional use permit, are we suggesting this go to an R3? What do we suggest in this go to or just a special condition, conditional use permit?
It would stay R1, it'd just be a special use permit under R1, which is allowed under the ordinance.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. All right, what we're going to do now, we'll open up the floor, it's the public hearing section. I'll open the floor, like I said, I'll go first, those in support of the application, and then I'll allow the floor to be opened up for those who have concerns and/or are opposed to the application. When I, when you come up, you will state your name and your address to the record, we've got to get all this stuff on the register, so if I ask you that, there's a reason why. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in support of the application? And if there is, again, I'll get you to come to the podium as we've done before. If you're unable, we can push the podium a little closer to you, it's mobile, so. All right, I'll ask a second time, is there anyone who'd like to speak in support? All right, and last but not least, to a third, third attempt, is there anyone who'd like to speak in support? Okay, I'll close the floor on the supportive side. Now we're going to move to the, I'm going to say opposition and/or those who have concerns. If you'll raise your hand, I'll get to you as quickly as I can, and if you'll come to the podium. Ms. Michelle, I saw you first. If you'll come on down, just give us your address, Ms. Michelle.
Michelle Johnson, I live at 431 Golds Run Way.
All right.
And first of all, I want to say I understand what Mr. Love is wanting to do and I sympathize with the situation. And it would seem like just allowing a short period of time wouldn't be that big an issue, except that I think that if you approve one such of these situations, that there would be more to follow and therein would lie the problem. First of all, I think this situation isn't unlike the concerns that the county had that led to passing the Mountain Protection Act as an example, because we wanted to avoid conditions that would lead to the unsightly appearance of what was happening and is and continues to happen in the Hawaii Sea area-like mountainsides up there. Similarly, most of the residents in Adair Mill property owners want to avoid conditions that could lead to a Helen slash Chattahoochee type tubing craze and the influx of short-term renters that could see tubing down Town Creek, which has been seen already from this rental. As a matter of fact, the nearest neighbor to this rental has already had disturbances reporting at 3:00 AM in the morning with people tubing in front of her property on Town Creek and making noise and disturbances. And I understand that she really had not contacted Mr. Love, I'm sure he would have done something about it, but she didn't want to get into any arguments. But it has already happened. Also, I think a few years back, when there was a property owner who decided to build a waste spray field on his property, is a similar situation to this. Fortunately, the county saw that that was an infringement on the rights of his neighbors. And while, while it wasn't something that we could handle with the referendum, it wasn't referendum, the ordinance that was passed, you were able to stop that activity. Many of the residents in Adair Mill community are retirees who were attracted to this property because of its protected covenants and peaceful setting. I know I was, we were. They have spent considerable portion of their retirement funds to build their full-time forever homes here. And they pay significant taxes and are active citizens of the county and they hope to be valued in county policy. This case is about one property, but it will set a precedent that will surely affect other properties in our community. And there are others who would take any approval of this request as a green light to pursue short-term rentals and businesses among these residences. That concludes my comments. If you would allow me to, I have a letter from a property owner who was not able to be here today, and it's just a brief letter, if you would allow me to read it.
And if you could leave a copy of that.
This is your copy. This is from Cindy Bailey, who lives on Mill Creek Trail, I don't know what the number This is to White County Board of Commissioners, please accept this written request as my sincere objection to Mr. Love's conditional use permit from the current residential use only R1 status. As a new resident and homeowner of White County, I applaud the board's decision to adopt the land use plan and protect property owners' investments. This and the fact that I was presented the Adair Mill homeowners' covenants upon purchase of our property is the reason I felt confident in choosing to purchase the land in the Adair Mill community and build our new home. Unfortunately, I have lived in a neighborhood where property values declined due to such variances. As a result of declining property values, the tax base declined as well. Therefore, I ask you to take these facts into consideration and make in your decision. Mr. Love wants this conditional use until he can flip the investment property at 55 Mill Creek Trail. Once, once such uses are granted, it becomes easier for potential new variances to be granted. I ask you to protect not only mine, but every homeowner's investment in the Adair Mill community by honoring our covenants and maintaining the residential use only status of our neighborhood.
All right, Michelle, I'll give this to you to end the meeting for public record. All right, thank you, Ms. Michelle. All right, one other hand, come on down.
I'm Carolyn Miller, 1167 Mill Creek Trail, and was the president of the Adair Mill Property Owners Association. A lot of us have difficulty with this request and some of what has been said already, I will skip, because I'm not going to duplicate everything. I just wanted you to know that the covenants of our association, along with all the other Adair Mill subdivisions, approve of nothing but single-family residences. That's how the property is to be used. And it goes along with what you people have decided for the land use programs, and we're hoping that you're going to stick to your guns there. In 2004, in July, our association by Quick Claim deeds acquired the park, community park, which butts up against this property that we're talking about. We did it mainly because it was not being cared for, even though everyone in Adair Mill is available to use it, and nothing was ever done with it, so we took it over. We are since caged to have it maintained, we pay the taxes on it. It is a private park. It is not a community park to be used by renters. That's one of our concerns. Another concern we have is, of course, the property values, which you heard Cindy Bailey is concerned with as well. We also discovered that in our neighborhood at the moment, we have one widower and three, four widows, three of whom live close proximity to this property. We're concerned with the fact that these people should not feel afraid to remain in their homes, just because they don't know who's wandering around the neighborhood. They've been through enough changes in their life, they should be allowed to stay put and feel comfortable with the neighborhood. Another thing we're concerned with is the peace, quiet, security, and privacy that we have been enjoying for almost 20 years. Most of us built our homes here as retirement homes, because it was away from hustle and bustle, we knew who was living there, we knew the people that built there, we knew that if they were financially able to build there, they were going to be decent people that we wanted to be associated with. One of the things that bothers me the most is that a lot of these people that come to rent for a day or two, or even a week or two, don't notice that our private roads are labeled as 25 mile an hour speed limits. We have a lot of people that walk these roads, there's a lot of animals that wander around, and we want our speed limit kept low, so no, there's no accidents or problems. They also do not know, that most of us do not hold ruppus and land parties, because it's Friday or Saturday night. We also do not leave litter on the sides of our roads. And none of us leave our garbage outside for the bears to come and rustle through. We really want this neighborhood to remain as is. We do not want strangers, we do not want people that come and go at their leisure. We've seen people stop at the corner near our house in the middle of the night, parked in their cars, wondering which way to turn, because they forgot where they were going. It's a wonder we haven't called the sheriff more frequently. But people wandering through our neighborhood this way just is not acceptable. And we do hope that you will see our point. We do feel sorry for Mr. Love, that he's gotten himself into a position that he can't get out of, but things happen. We should not have to give up our rights because he made a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
I have a question from Ms. Miller.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's way to the end. All right, is there anyone else who has any comments, concerns regarding the application? All right. Going once. Going once. Not very careful. I don't want to prolong something, just say it prolonged in these public hearings. All right. Second call? All right. Third call? Okay. Public hearing, public hearing section is officially closed. At this moment, the chair recognizes Commissioner Goode. Commissioner Goode.
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Miller right there. I understand that there's other people that are, have vacation rentals out there?
We believe so, but we have no definite proof.
No, no proof. So are you doing anything to see about getting them?
I'm sorry.
Are you doing any, are you being proactive to get that taken care of, or do?
What is, yeah, are you, what he's asking is, are you looking for?
We did, we did call the planning committee and let them know that there was someone next to Mr. Love that was doing, in fact, I think that's rented more frequently. Of course, I'd know it because I'm right up the street, so I get the noise. But yes, that's, we tried that, and I don't know what came of it. These people bought the house about two years ago. They reside in Florida. I've never met them, never seen them at a meeting. I wouldn't know them if I took over them. I think they bought it strictly to rent. It's not a very great house, but it was great for rental. That's all we've done.
Especially when your covenants, when they bought the house, they got a copy of the covenant, so they knew what the covenant said, that it wasn't allowed, or they should have known if that was not allowed.
Gentlemen, do you have any other questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, Mike?
He was wondering if I would give them the covenants when I bought the house.
Oh, I'm sure they were, I can't be positive, but generally, the realtors and people, the lawyers that are closing these houses, contact us for that and make sure that they do get a copy. I've taken care of that job a long time, but I don't remember getting a request for this particular owner. But he was, one of the original owners, in fact, helps, helped set up our association, very aware of the covenants, but it doesn't help much. A lot of people know that the covenants haven't been enforced that well, so they don't think about it.
Well, one thing we have to be careful as a body, you know, it's not the county's job to ensure private covenants. That's not our role, our role. But does catch our ear is when we have seasonal rentals that are participating and not paying, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Sure.
I think you know what I mean by that, so.
We did send out a registered letter to this person, and it came back. Never got a response from him. They, I don't know if they pay their dues every year, but other than that, I don't know.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Mr. Love, to kind of get, like I said a little while ago, just to reiterate, this body will come back together a week from today, 4:30, and at that time, there'll be an official voting meeting, and I'll ask, you know, what the board's pleasure, aid to, it could be aid to approve, decline, or if there's additional questions, it could be tabled. So I'm just trying to give you a little bit of insight. But thank you. All right. All right. Let's close in item number one. We're going to move on to item number two, and if you would like to leave, now would be the time. I'll wait just a moment, just so we won't have a... You're welcome to stay. I mean, I don't want you to feel like we're crazy. You have the legal right to hang out with us if you'd like. Okay. All right, item two on our agenda, conductive public hearing with a land use application filed by Mr. Jason Chesser, Sonia Chesser, three district property located at 2836 Skid Mountain Road, Cleveland, 30528, from a C1, which is community commercial district, to an R1 residential, single-family district. That's tax match 065-097. Total acreage is 8.24. Current use for the entire tract is C1 community commercial. Mr. Self, do you have the hill?
Okay. Again, this application is to request, I'm to consider changing the zoning district from C1 community commercial to R1 residential, single-family district. Property street address is 2836 Skid Mountain Road, Cleveland. Total acreage is 8.24 acres. Property joins R1 residential district to east and the west, A1 agricultural forestry district to the south, and C1 community commercial district to the north. The White County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map show this area's agricultural and low-density housing. Property is supplied by well and septic tank, and the planning commission voted to approve this rezoning to R1, single-family residential.
All right. Any questions at this moment, for Mr. Self? All right. Happy to answer, Michelle. Thank you. Ms. Chesser, come on down. This is Ms. Chesser, applicant. Ms. Chesser, share with the group what you guys are up to.
Okay, so we purchased the property. It was actually 10 acres. It was all zoned R1, and so we had it divided into an eight-acre tract to be rezoned as residential, and then the two-acre tract would just be left as commercial. It actually has a, they use it as a business, as it is right now, but we plan a living in the house. So that's it.
All right. Any questions? All right. I'll keep it short.
Yours is pretty simple.
So since you're 10, 11 acres, total, total tract, you're going to divide that, eight acres or so with the town, and leave the commercial as the commercial building?
Right.
All right.
And there's multiple surge.
There, on the residential eight-acre property, there is an additional, I think they have trailers behind the house, so there is septic up there. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking if, are the building and the commercial part that's going to be separated, will it have its own?
Yes, sir.
It has now, it's on?
Yes, sir, it has its own septic tank and everything. And I went through with Sean to identify all that as well.
Okay, so both properties, just to make clear, has, will have its own septic system, and it meets codes, my understanding, by the package. All right. Any questions? That's it on that part. I'm going to be redundant here. Same scenario. Open the floor for those in support, and I'll open the floor for those that have concerns and were opposed to the request. So open the floor of those. If there's anyone in the audience, raise your hand if you're here in support of the That's first call. Okay, I'll ask a second time.
I have a question. Can someone define what community commercial means? What constitutes community commercial?
Yep. Definition, community commercial.
It's low-intensity commercial, as opposed to highway commercial, which is high-intensity commercial.
Low-traffic area. Simple, simple. All right.
That's a simple definition, right?
Would you like to, they'll be glad Debbie afforded the entire subsection if you'd like, I mean. All right, third call. Once, twice, three times. All right, we'll close that section. If you have concerns or are opposed, raise your hand. I'll get to you in the same manner. First call. And second call. Girls, did y'all raise your hand? That was a joke. Okay. For those who don't know, Ms. Chesser's daughters are out in the lobby doing a great job and just having a little fun, so all's good. It's just trying to make light of this. Not in a bad way, but, third call. Ms. Shannon, that filled it up for the record. We offered three calls, and no one has chosen to speak with concerns and or opposed. All right, we'll close that section. Gentlemen, do you have any additional questions, or staff, or Ms. Chesser?
No, I know most of our neighbors have had a problem and don't call.
She's in Rogersville.
Yeah, you're one of Rogers.
I relate to most of the people around it.
All right. All right. Ms. Chesser, and I think you heard before, as we spoke earlier, a week from today, 4:30, we'll have a voting meeting. If you, your husband could be here, just in case there were to be any additional questions, I'll ask the pleasure of the board at that time.
And that's next week.
That's next week, a week from today, 4:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Bye, girls.
This series is about balancing color. To begin with, I want to cover the whole thing with the mother color wash. I'm going to use a purple as mother color here. So when I'm approaching a color balance problem, now, it's, I think, go slow, like I'm going here. It's better to go slow in the beginning. You can see that is low-intensity purple. It's nearly a gray purple. That's still purple. The main thing here is to watch what happens in the color distribution. So we're distributing right now, in terms of color distribution, we're distributing violins. And I'm glad that the distribution is working out this way because then that's going to give us an excellent opportunity to show how the distribution of, or how intensity can affect the distribution. We need a little bit more of that purple in there. This lesson is about chroma. Now, we use the word chroma to mean intensity, and I usually use the term intensity when I'm talking about the role it's playing in a painting. Well, first of all, I'm starting out with a gamelan dioxide purple. I usually have great agent in my value line using white just to create a value line. I think the thing to do, now, you see, this falls right in the center, which is kind of, kind of tricky to have something that is the center, something that's pulling towards the center to fall so close to the center. So I need to pull attention away from that. I think I wanted to look at this area right in here. There are a lot of confusing images down there, and I'm not really interested in copying those images. I am interested in distributing color. Now, see what I'm doing here? The yellow that was in that, the background area there, had become far too intense for the quality of light that we're seeing over in this area right in here. In this lesson, we were focusing on a single thing called balancing with chroma. And what that means is, our concern throughout the demonstration was the degree of color or hue that we presented with each brush stroke, or the degree of absence of hue. That's one way to say it. I didn't say it that way in the last, but it is one way to say it.
Moving on. Moving on to item four. Discuss spring 2018 road paving project by Commission District, and I don't want to belabor the point here. Gentlemen, I know each of you have some roads in your district that either A to be paved or B to be resurfaced. I'll start with District One. Commissioner Goode.
The, I guess the highest priority that I have in my district would be the old Blue Creek Road going into Laciola. The big problem right there is that the road is real narrow just before it gets into Laciola, and we, there has, thankfully, there's been a little bit of progress made on trying to get that a little bit wider at the end, so, unless we can get that resolved down there, I wouldn't want to put that on the program. I'm hoping that it, that it might go forward, but if that's, my second priority would be the Clough Sims Road over there. And we also have some problems with that in that Evan and I had gone out and looked, and there's about, where is it, about 1,600 feet through there that needs to be opened?
There's about, yeah, they'd be around, I think it's more like 1,200 feet, and there was about five or 600 feet of that that was in woods, the rest I was out in open, and that property does belong to the school board.
Yeah, and so we, so.
You mean, that bridge, huh?
The bridge.
Yeah, and the bridge.
The sports complex.
And so, you know, a lot of things would have to be worked out with the school board there, so I, I would, that is probably not happening until next year's program, but that would be my second, and then Henry Nix would be my third choice as far as roads, so.
Well, and one thing I'd like to do tonight, when we come out of this, from each district, you know, like we've done before historically, come up with a couple of roads from each district, and we'll ask staff to go out, obtain bids, so that we'll know what kind of dollars we're looking at before we, you know, go completely.
That's what we're doing, we're getting price, then we pull up what we can and what we gain.
So I guess, Terry, if I, am I hearing go pricing Blue Creek?
Blue. Do Blue Creek first, and let's just see what, how that goes. If that, if that doesn't get on this year, then we probably would have to go to Henry Nix.
Okay.
Because I don't see the other one happening for a couple of years.
Why don't we, back on the Clough Sims situation, I think we all have concerns being the opportunity to open up some throughway through there, but we got to work with the school board.
Right.
Before that, over the next few months, that we start with us, our staff, start working with the school board, and see if that can be done.
I think we need to put the city in there, too. You know, we've all talked all the way up, because it would benefit the city as much as it would the school. The school bus is not having to go all the way around. They got all the traffic coming through downtown every morning. You know, and I spoke to them, like I always says, I think it would benefit, you know, if all the rivers could get together and sit down, we're all good splosh money. I don't think county should have to open it all the way up to, let's put the whole bill. That's in my opinion, so.
You know, we've talked.
You know, we've talked about this before, just getting everybody on board.
We talked about it a couple of years ago, you know, when Kathy Thompson was there, the school bus, there was a lot of concern with the bypass coming in, the safety of the school buses traveling back and forth, how that would really help out, too, so.
Well, one of the problems are is we've got two schools, one on each side, got a dead-in road at East Coast. So to me, that, that's a safety issue, and that is a problem, especially the daycare, being out on the little road that it's on right there. There's only one way in and one way out, so.
Yeah, the head start down there has been a concern for mine for, I guess, the last 10 years, because if they ever had an emergency down there, you, you know, there's only one way in and one way out, you know.
That's what I'm saying, would benefit all three entries.
Really. Like we had conversations earlier, you know, if the school board is on board with this, how friendly are the idea, because once, if we do this, that road's got to be a public road, throughway 24/7. You can't put a gate on it.
Yeah, exactly.
So these are questions we'll have to get answered.
I think from some of the conversations that we've had, that seems to be agreeable. I don't think we've got any issues.
If we had a clutch this year, yellow, what do we talk about?
Yeah, we won't break that back.
Old Blue Creek Road, by the way.
All right. Okay. All right. Sorry. Old Blue Creek Road. All right. And then we'll see how that comes in. If that doesn't seem to not want to work, your safe option would be Henry Nix.
Yeah.
Which, one thing I do want to say, I spoke to the property owner with Henry Nix. For years, they've had concerns about, you know, a thoroughfare, and that's not the concept on this project. I think they had conversations 15, 20 years ago. I don't know how long it's been, and, you know, we're in one there. Is that another one? Okay, we keep going back to your time in office before, do we?
I have to take a big seat.
I don't know where that one's from.
But what we're talking about here is enough for, is enough for two cars to safely traverse looking east and west on that road.
Also, on that road, Terry, I think you'll find, and you talked today with staff, I've always thought there was right of way on that road. Now, some of the property owners says there's not, but I think if you look at the books, you'll find.
There was very detailed minutes back, I mean, a few years after I came to work here, maybe, maybe it was 10 years ago, where all that was researched, all that was, and there was a lot of opposition. there was a lot of opposition at that time. But of course, that's been...
But they were trying to pave the...
Well, it's paved, this end is paved down to the city, you know, C's got this end paved to the city limits, then the other end's paved out to Timly Lake. So it's just a little dirt section in between there.
All right. Well, that'll be your second item, if something... Okay. All right, District Two. Commissioner Halk.
I have from number one, Sam Craven Road. They've paved it on the so-called, this has been born around the county since before my time. So all the residents there keep...
Do you remember that one?
That, that's your fault as well.
All the residents down there say that maybe it's called E.
I don't know. Don't mind, I'll, can I ask you a question? I've, I've had several folks as well, in fact, me to Sam Craven. And this is more for staff. As you're coming, I call up Sam Craven, you're heading up to the paved road, and you're staring at Hogan Lumber. When you're coming up, there's a, we're going to need to do some shaving, so that as you're coming on to, I'm just thinking ahead here.
Race to sign distance.
Exactly. That's something when we go, we need to look at that as well. So, all right, Sam Craven, which is the current dirt road, let's go ahead and get a bid for paving that.
And number two, I have Bonnie Pearl Lane for resurfacing.
Bonnie Pearl resurfacing, all right.
Number three, if I may, is the rest of AC Dorsey Road. Half of that road was paved several years ago. The other half on, on the east side of Lockfish.
The west side?
East side, it's not, yes, right. On these sides are paved, which is about a half a mile, you know?
And I want to...
What about baby house?
Well, no, it turns off that one. That ties right into Steve Lewis's district and favor, makes all that, the whole thoroughfare.
But we could issue a thoroughfare for...
Where there's no, you go...
A lot of traffic on Woodbridge.
Paved the dirt from that.
Right. Now, one thing, folks, though, in the audience, you know, us going out, we're going to get the data and the information and the cost of these roads. We may not finance to be able to do all of these next year, but we're going to get our data. So I'm just trying to... All right. Good. District Three.
District Three is Stanley Nix, which is already on the books to be done. It's just about to finish it up. I think, I think the contract is about ready to start up there. Is that right, Dave?
Tomorrow.
Our, I think our intent was to try to grade it this time, and then try to pave it next year, which is, that's fine with me. It's getting pretty late to start opening one up. So anyway, it needs to be done. The next one of mine, and I think Dave is already on top of this one, is Hawthorne Drive for resurfacing. I think they're already looking at some numbers on that. It's like 1.3, 3 miles. It's just a subdivision that's coming all to pieces.
That's...
Busting up. You can even see where the power company crossed the road when they dug the, the lateral for probably years ago. And then my only, my only grading road that I would like to do next year is FM Road, which is just 1.3 miles of Calum Valley. Dave and I have already looked at that. It's, it's just a little ways up there. But a lot of people use that. That's a shortcut from, from Gerard Road and, and Calum Valley Road.
Grading only?
Grading, grading only. I mean, it's just, it's just 1.3 miles.
Well, it's just getting it prepped for the...
Yeah. That's something the county, that's one that the county can do. And I've had, I've had some calls on Hester Road, but I'm going to have to do a little bit of research out there and see. But, but I can wait. And see, Greg, two of mine is already on the books to be done nearly, so I'm not asking up for one.
All right. Commissioner Ryan. Oh, oh, is that your list?
Yeah, I'm always done.
Wow.
Before getting, before getting rid, I had a phone call up by your house out there on that business. I've got a complaint about the white line on the right side in the town. If there is no white line no more, they can't see like, you can see the edge of the road on like, I think on the low upper end.
Well, there's hardly any on Asbestus Road. There's hardly, there's not any white lines hardly.
Some of them, but they couldn't see that. I haven't been down in the wildlands.
Well, I can tell you this. This is, this is, it's both, it's both theirs. I'm not going to miss words.
Fight, some fight.
We messed up. We had an opportunity. We should have liked the road.
Oh, boy, I did. Well, yeah, I agree with that one.
I agree.
And that's been some years ago. I understand that. I traverse it every single day.
I promise I passed that along, from get staff just about, if we can even put them. They come by, pass my school bus. Of course, I know it's early in the morning, it's still dark at 7:30, and I'm trying to see and can't see the edge of the road, you know, without the...
There is a ton of traffic on Asbestus Roads, and that cuts through Joe Black Road. There is a ton.
And they're heading up for Auburn at 75 as well.
Those people on Auburn at 75 are using that to go to the Yola School. They have to go to the, to the Yola School over there.
Yep. Well, a lot of folks, and I'm going to say that they are flying through Babe Ruth's first wife's old home place. I don't know what I'm talking about, but anyway. If anyone stays after the meeting, I'll, I'll share, I'll take with us, that's that big curve right past the rec apartment on the left.
That's where you're at.
Yes.
Yes, we've had, we've had over the last 40 years, no dance in that curve. So... My crews been wasn't on Joe Black Road. You get to a, run over a, buddy.
Yeah. I'm sorry. We don't, we don't age there.
All my two roads, I want to look at to see what it would cost to repave Cedar Hollow Road.
Repave Cedar Hollow.
And repave Saltine Woods Trails Road.
What, this, you know, the length of those?
Yeah, well, the Saltines 1.03, and Cedar Hollow, I'm not sure. But, you know, just price it and see.
All right. And paint rotor?
And then the ones I just want to look at, which we priced it last year, bring up Joe Franklin Road again, the best that we got, and see if we can do anything, maybe we can possibly profit, get it. I don't know if we can do anything with it. I'm just, you know, just look at it again. And then y'all gonna laugh, but up at Dandy Lane, oh, I'm not talking about the whole road. I'm talking to the top of the hill where the shop goes to the Helen. If that guy's going to put motel in, and I know he's going to have to pave it, then would be a good time. If we can get some right-of-way, if we can, I'm not saying we're going to do this or neither. Just, you know, see what it would cost to, if we can, the property of Buckets said they would give us some, too, so if nothing else, we could just get to the top of the hill, because that's going to be a, you know, once they get that hotel going, that's going to be a big tax, so.
From where the hotels?
The roads in, in the, in the county, yeah.
From the hotel?
The roads, the, the hotels got to pay from, from 75...
Up to their property.
Up to their property.
And I'm talking about going to the next piece of property at the forks there, where you go to the left of the Helen, where Terry Sims place is. And that's what I'm talking about, just right there where the forks, top right there.
Might can ask you a question.
If it can be done.
Have we learned any information regarding the hotel and the plans? Have we heard anything the last couple of days? I haven't asked.
The last couple of days, the last conversation I had with Jerry Elkins and Helen is they're not going to issue a C O until their road's paid.
Okay.
I'm just saying, just look at it.
All right.
Will we allow them to take the side path?
Yeah.
Up down south?
Yes, we got to.
The hair didn't go with, the hair didn't go with the mule on that neither.
Yep. Ooh, it came in handy. Now, y'all don't know what I'm talking, they know what I'm talking about.
That's all I got.
All right. Mr. Vannifuge and Mr. Ken Jimmy will work on that list.
We will do that.
Get some information coming weeks.
We will do that.
And we'll come back in the work session at later date, see where we're at, and how much money we got. All right. Moving on to, right, just, I lost myself. Mr. Hamby is unable to be with us this evening, so we'll move on to item six. Discuss renewing the contract, park direct department concessionaire agreement. I was in complete comfort. Mr. Wiley.
Mr. Joe, you have to do that. Maybe it plays with Mr. Chairman. We've, Dennis and his crew have been out there for all of our tournaments that we've had. We've only got to be at two locations there. It's park, the gymnasium during basketball season, and the one outside on the hill during baseball season, softball season. Based on softball, two tournaments, obviously the biggest draw. Could have had the 20 outside county things, so it was a good time there. But, you know, we estimated we'd bring in about 1,000, and the total of the guy is 770, $770.25.
That's for the last 12 month. That's November of last year?
December of last year through July of this year. They have not opened in the fall because we don't have anything at the park going on that would benefit their bid.
I guess the point of our bid, it didn't cost us.
So that's what we've had so far, since, we, since the first contract was in the first last year.
Just asking, will we put this out for bid? Do we have any other bidders?
No, sir. We do not. And actually, we did it twice, did we not? And this was the only company that, we did have one other, I think, ask about it, came in and sat down with everybody, if they were from out of the area, I believe.
Is their concession stand down at the soccer complex?
There is.
Do they do it there, too?
They do not. We, all we have there are practices and the soccer games. Most everybody in soccer brings their tub full of fruit and sports drinks. So we found that soccer just is not beneficial unless you open some big tournament, and all they do.
And part of our problem in bidding it out was we had no history to share with these vendors as far as, you know, how much the revenue had been on it. So there was just so little interest with that. And Joe is asking to renew the contract for a two-year period. I'm just throwing that out there. If you read his agenda request, it's for a two-year period.
We'd like to go ahead and do it for two years, because in the original agreement it says we could be extended for two years. Now, we give an opportunity, obviously, from now to next year on the current concession stand we have, and then possibly into the, when the new complex is, is open, we'll have that complex open to, gets a little bit better history and know what's going on. They pay for all the drinks. I mean, it's, you know...
They handle everything.
They handle everything.
From the purchasing, supplying.
Correct.
We have no staff doing anything.
Correct.
They claim the bill, and then they do it off.
Correct. We do, all, all we do, they've got a key, and they've got an extra for, for their storage areas and stuff. And honestly, during non-basketball times, the concession stand there in the building, we use it for all of our stuff that we may need. Like during football, it lands up, has a lot of football equipment because kids are trying stuff on. But they're not in there. And then the concession stand, because it's separate on the hill, doesn't affect us at all based on. So it works out fine.
All I can, just make sure if we go with these, if we get a, a new current insurance certificate, this one dated last year, so much stuff ran out.
Yeah, all that's what came with their original new package.
So is he going to, is he, will he be the concessionaire at the new location?
If we go with, with a two-year contract yesterday, well, he would be there through December on the end of November of 2019. And the hope is that when we open that complex in February, March of 19, we'll play on it from then until October or November, you know, that year, depending on what the weather does, is kind of, that's our goal, anyway.
Consent, gentlemen? Okay, consent agenda. All right. Joe, thank you.
If you have any questions, Mr. Chairman, I will be in town next Monday, but if you have any questions, just let me know, and I'll be glad to answer them.
Well, thank you. Any or anything, we just place on consent agenda, so hopefully, you know, simple.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have a five or six-year-old team to draft tonight.
You'll get her done. All right. Moving on to item seven. Discuss ratification of the contract for removal and disposal of Southern Disaster Recovery LLC with debris staging area agreement with CWC-10 LLC. Mr. Murphy?
You want to read all that?
Yes.
Or you're going to rest?
Yeah. Much breakfast will be sort of... Basically, we're here just to ratify a contract with Southern Disaster Recovery and the staging site with CWTN LLC. This is for our debris removal from Hurricane Irma. We implemented our debris management plan and did our bidding based on the emergency declaration. We had two companies to provide bids for debris removal, one being SDR, the other being Patterson. SDR had the lowest average cubic yard cost at 775 a cubic yard, and we chose them as our debris removal contractor. Currently, they've been operating now, they've got about two fifths of the county done, I'm sorry, three fifths of the county done. They've started working the, what we're calling Zone Two, which is 115 to 129 south, 115 west, east to 129 south, mostly the area, and then the Gutenek Road area, Duncan Bridge Road area on their first pass.
Do we have an approximation of how much yet that has been picked up?
Yeah, I do, I do not have that number. I know that the first, the first week, the lot over there off Valuation Parkway was pretty full, so they finally brought a track haul in and started piling that up. And hopefully, they're going to start burning this week over there on that side, pending the park commission approval to do some.
All right. So we've received force EPD approval, all of that.
Yes.
Ortiz Croft, that's our dog.
Yes, sir.
Those trailers that they're hauling on, most pool behind trailer, how many cubic yards do they put in all of them?
Uh, I think they're measured out at 30 cubic yards.
30?
30 cubic yards. And so that we're, and then the debris site monitors, they give a percentage when they bring their ticket in. So they do a percentage on what that is.
Is that, you mean, when they bring a weigh ticket in? Did they weigh this?
They don't weigh it. It's just estimated on what, how much is in already trailer itself. So they'll look at a trailer and say it's 100%. Nothing's ever 100%, but it's anywhere from, it's averaging anywhere from 70 to 90% full.
Now, because...
No wonder they're driving new trucks and putting in new...
Did, you might have said, I want to listen if you did, did this company bring all their employees or lay hiring local?
They attempted to hire local subs, could not get any to work for the amount of money that they were willing to pay.
Okay, I just wondered.
Yeah, the, I think some of the local subs was wanting $14 a cubic yard. Their contract is only 775 a cubic yard. And on average, the, like in Houston, Texas, and South Florida, they're only paying like a five and a quarter a cubic yard.
Yeah. Why are they asking so much?
I, I have no idea. But the subs were asking for that much.
Well, okay. I just wondered.
A lot of subs are busy already.
Yeah. It's been, it's been very difficult to find companies to come in. We've had a few come in here.
You know, I had some people calling, you know.
Yeah, right. And we sent all that to them and asked them to contact those locals, but they couldn't get them in that price range that they did. Some of the, and they've had a difficult time finding subs to come in here and work because all the, all the, you know, between, some of them's even going over, you know, south into Puerto Rico to do some work. So it's been very difficult. The, the big crew we got working here now, they're out of South Carolina.
Okay.
They're not some white fish.
All right, you talked about that, and the Puerto Rico contract, what you're talking about?
With two employees.
Those are still...
Oh, that's some of that, okay. No. That's oral. Yes, sir. Okay, sorry. Now, and because of the federal declaration and reimbursements, share with the group that what we will be anticipating, what we'll be getting back in recouping our funds.
Yes, the maximum amount of the total that White County will be responsible for is 15%. 75% will be paid by FEMA, 10% by the state of Georgia, and somewhere with that, within up to 15% is what we'll be responsible for.
All right.
That's cool, be a nice car when they stick part of that pile there.
Yeah, they go on...
I go by there every day, two or three times. That's a big brush pile. I'd love to burn that. I'd just like to see if that...
And just to let you guys know, they'll be doing an air curtain burn, which they'll be forcing air into the pit and burning fast. So there'd be, there'll be some smoke, but it'll be limited to what normally...
Well, it's in an open place there. There's no reason not to let it breathe. I could burn tires if it... So they're not going to burn the pile. You're saying they're going to, going to dig a pit, and they're going to take that debris and move it into the pit and control burn, so we shut it off at night?
Yes.
Originally, we were required to chip it off.
Originally, the EPD was going to require us to chip it, haul it to a landfill or to a, somebody that would take the chips. And we worked with EPD and Porsche Commission on getting a burn, which is cheaper for us per cubic yard.
And so the folks now, it's no... And so the folks noticed, know that this is material, this is wood and tree material. It's not, it's not wood, I mean, I'm sorry, it's not metal, it's not tires, as some commissioners would like to. Alright, moving on. We just need to ratify this?
Yes, sir, just, okay.
Consent? 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 Alright. And David, to you, your staff and Dave and Jimmy, from Emergency Management, I think we said this last month, a few weeks ago, but all of the folks went above and beyond, worked tails off, especially a lot of our locations had no power. And just as usual, once they showed out in a great way for the citizens of White County, so. I know words don't mean a whole lot in this situation, but really, please convey to your staff, thank you very much. Alright, moving on. Item eight, discuss amendment to the White County Flood Plane Management Ordinance to reference updated flood insurance study, flood insurance rate maps that are effective January fifth, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Sale, you have.
Okay, we've got a letter from FEMA September twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, says that a, in accordance with the National Flood Insurance Program, we've implemented proper measures according to our ordinance, and then a new flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map have been completed for the community. The new study and maps will become effective January fifth, two thousand eighteen. By that date, the Department of Homeland Security's Federal Emergency Management Agency Regional Office is required to approve the legally enforceable flood plane management measures of the community and adopt in accordance with Title forty-four Code of Federal Regulation, section sixty-point-three. Our code currently matches or addresses all the concerns in sixty-three. So, really, all we need to do is change the date and take over with the new maps that become effective January fifth of two thousand eighteen. And there have not been significant changes according to that letter in either the study or the map. But we will have a meeting with GMA and their consultant and the DNR and FEMA folks on November the twenty-eighth with our mapping folks to make sure that we got the current map or the new map that'll go into effect, January fifth.
So, all the areas, and all staying the same pretty much, just an update.
Pretty much. There might be a couple of properties that will come out of the flood plane, but there's not significant additions. But we'll make sure that we got all that clear on that November twenty-eighth meeting, which will be right here at ten o'clock.
Alright, consent? Consent agenda? Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, moving on to our, just upcoming board appointments. Board of Possessors, three-year term expired December thirty-first. Let's spin again. If I recall, we did have Mr. Glover ask for reappointment.
Mr. Glover has asked for reappointment. I have not received any other applications for that, that board appointment.
Okay. Yes. And those, see, there's three seats on that board and each one of them are at a three-year increment, so one and one and one, so. Consent? Consent, Mr. Glover? Consent on Mr. Glover, Shannon? And then on the building authority, we have three appointments, for terms varying, one, two and three years. I didn't have anything else in my package, do we have any applications?
I've received one today from Mr. Muse, is that right? Did I say his name right? He's attended a few of our meetings in USA.
Oh, that's the fellow who, I'm sorry, that's not professional, we say quite. But that's the guy who does the computer stuff, Android websites?
Yeah, marketing.
Muse Solutions.
No, his name is Mika. I think he's Monica's accountant. Monica, maybe?
Anyway, I'll send that to y'all tomorrow.
Okay.
The one that I did get today was in my box this afternoon. And then all the others that I have spoken with whose terms are up are wanting to be reappointed, so.
Will you just email us all that information?
I will, absolutely.
And we'll address that at our next work session. Alright, and last but not least, under our library board, Mr. Humphreys here, but we have a posed appointee, Ms. Susan, and I will. Debate. If I'd have said that, it'd been wrong. If you.
I would say debatte.
You just spill it instead of debate. Yeah, I said debatte. Debate, debate. Anyway. She's a retired educator.
Yes, she's been serving up as representative of the Board of Education. And with them dropping their funding, basically, no funding, no representation. And so what we're doing is asking to increase the Board of Commissioners' representation and keep her on.
I know I had heard the word at school where it was cutting their funding. What does that actually cut out of your budget?
Five thousand dollars. That was four materials for children.
Well, that's not enough, didn't have a seat in the first place. Sorry, I don't have to say that. Yeah, that leaves my face.
Thank you, Lori, in New York.
E W I N. Alright, I'll make it short, sweet and simple. Consent? Consent?
Consent.
Consent, thank you, gentlemen. Alright. Oh, boy.
Now, we're gonna.
Item ten, we're gonna find at this point, our spending money. I have a little fun here. That's not a good idea. Alright, item ten, discuss replacement road department vehicles and tractor. Dave, can Jamie public works director? I think you've got three items for us to discuss.
Thank you, I'm not sure if I liked it, oh, no.
We saw the money.
Thank you.
That was, oh, boy.
Oh, boy, okay. Back in budget time, we, the road department asked for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two new tractors. Since then, we've had some circumstances behind our control. We've had a dump truck blew the motor and we had a crew truck in an accident. So, what I'm, what I'm here for is, I was asking about a hundred and fifty thousand and with, what I'm asking for kind of brings it up to like, what, two hundred and ten thousand? So, that's a fifty thousand dollar change. If I can explain that change to you, the new Holland tractor, it's quite, it's, it's a thirteen-year-old tractor. And if we, if we can trade that in, we'll get six thousand dollar trade-in for that tractor, okay? And we got state contract pricing for another tractor for about forty-one thousand, so we can get that tractor for about thirty, thirty-five thousand. We don't really have to bid that out because of state contract prices. That's just approval to be put on the cassette agenda the next week.
How many hours is on this new Holland, this two thousand four tractor?
Three hours, oh, boy. It's got, it's got my hours on it, sir. Thirteen years old. I've got all the information in here except for hours on that.
And they don't grow by mile, they don't tractor, they grow by hour.
New Holland, sixteen sixty-three.
This is for a mower?
Right. Forty-five, forty-five, forty-five eighty-three hours.
Forty-five?
Four thousand, five hundred eighty-three hours, okay? I did have that information, okay.
So, this is a mower, bush hog tractor, pull bush hogs?
That's gonna be a pull by, yes, sir. Yeah, enclosed pull by.
Tractor with bush hogs.
Yeah. Bush hog, yes, sir.
You got a bucket on the front?
The bucket.
No. Didn't we just buy a new tractor two years ago? Or was that the one with the sidearm?
About one, ten years ago.
I don't know, I mean, you don't.
I'll answer you in a while.
Our newest one is a twelve, new Holland.
That was the sidearm one we bought, okay. What is this, a seventy, seventy-two horsepower, is this one?
The proposed one?
Seventy.
The, the new one, seventy, yeah.
That tractor doesn't have a lot of hours on it, right?
It is, though.
Is that a cap tractor, like the older, the cap tractor or open station tractor?
Open. The, I'm sorry, the, the new one will be in cap.
Cap.
Okay. But the existing one, the two thousand four, is open.
Yes, it is.
And what's wrong, what's wrong with the oh-four, so that's shot?
It's just, it's just, it's just old, sir. When we mow, we use three mowers at one time and then we go another section for three mowers. And then we have two backup mowers, okay? So, that's why we needed two. We needed another side and another rear, okay? We're trying to keep it where they're all enclosed to keep the dust out and more safety for the employee. And talking to Hall County, Havisham and Lumpkin, they, they purchased these couple, these motor tractors.
So, what kind of problems are we having with this new Holland? I wouldn't be worried about this, I'd be worried about the yellow jug, it's not on it, that's what I'd be worried about. I mean, apparently, if it's a two thousand four new Holland, it's never been anything but full of bush hogs.
Yeah, we, we, we put some money into this, too, you know. We, we have to, we have to get a better line of tractors. We, we have, I'll tell you right now, we've got a nineteen seventy-eight Ford, we've got two thousand four new Holland, a ninety-one Ford, a ninety-five Ford, a seven John Deere, a ten John Deere and a twelve new Holland.
Are you using them, the seventy-eight and the ninety-one, or they just sitting down there?
The seventy-eight, the seventy-eight, we did, we, the Ford, the ninety-one Ford, I'm sorry, the seventy-eight Ford just got in an accident, so that one can't be used. That was hit by a garbage truck.
We filed a claim that we can only pay seven hundred and fifty dollars for the thing, so.
But it's a good backup.
It's good, it's good piece of equipment.
Yeah, but they're not gonna pay as much for it. We're still working on that.
Well, I think it was maybe a lose on a new Holland that you want to trade, but it's still useful, nothing's wrong with it, like it was still usable. Yeah, we're talking about older tractors that are sitting there, we're replacing some of the later ones. We got it, I should still just keep it, use it, we got another tractor there.
Keep what the? Keep the oh-four.
The oh-four new Holland. And replace the one that just got.
The seventy-eight, the twenty thousand. It's gone. Let, let the oh-four replace the seventy-eight and then possibly a new one, is what I think I might hear.
That's why I'm close there. Six thousand dollars.
We'd get, we'd get nothing for the old one, we'd get six thousand for this, for the other.
Six thousand. Well, we're saying we should keep that tractor and then buy, possibly buy another one, can you still use the two thousand four?
I think David's. Yes, yes.
I think my, my question's turned into a comment, I think we're about six thousand dollars, I think we're giving the tractor. Well, yeah, we all.
But can you, you, John Deere will give us.
Have they been on good deals to see what they bring on good deals?
Excuse me?
Has it been put on good deals to see what they bring on good deals?
They were just, at, at a.
Well, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna trade, they're gonna give you six thousand dollars for that, and they're gonna turn around and sell it for about nine thousand dollars. They're gonna clean it up, make about twenty-five hundred break down.
That's good for them.
Might pay, yeah, but it ain't good for us.
You know, you know something, I'll be more inclined to keep the oh-four and just look at, if we're gonna buy one, just buy it at seventeen outright.
I'm, I'm just trying to be a team player with not, getting rid of the old stuff and getting new stuff.
Understand, but we're trying to get you, we're trying to Scotch you with an old one, replace that seventy-eight that's went down. And oh-four is only thirteen years old.
Okay.
And we've got a history of running stuff to the.
Real slow, aren't we? Well, if done these.
And if it's still running.
We should.
Is the motor still strong and is it still running?
We, we've been putting money into all these tractors, but yes, it's still a good tractor and that's why we could get six thousand dollars for it. They're just all old tractors. But yes, we can, we can keep that tractor if that's what you want, yes, sir.
Guys, on the regular vote?
All please?
No, that one. Or do y'all still strong enough, you want consent agenda? It's just the tractors, all we're talking about.
We're gonna blow the dress one for now.
I'm just trying to keep that total going, I understand. No, we understand that and appreciate that, but.
I'm just like, I'm on the road, down the road, next, in a few months or whatever, we'll go say, well, we lost a seventy-eight tractor, we're in one tractor, they won't have to buy another or something.
Yes.
The new Holland, if it's still workable with a bush hog, we keep doing, light stuff with it or whatever we need to do with it, thank you. I agree, I, it just sounds like we just had one got run over and destroyed and we're not replacing ever, replacing one that's running and working.
You'll just do a regular vote or just buy the Kubota outright? Or you'll consent to it?
Is Kubota, all banks doing a good deal or doing good?
John, John Deere had state contract price for the twenty thousand dollars more for maybe four, four horsepower more. We couldn't really get apples to apples. Once again, trying to say good morning.
They're not long with Kubota's. They're not long with Kubota's. John Deere was twenty thousand more.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. Trying to get close to apples to apples.
How about the warranty, are the warranties similar?
Alright, yeah.
Well, we just feel, uh. Because we haven't spent anything, that's kind of.
So, we're just talking about buying that Kubota?
Right.
Can I keep the other ones?
Well, we're gonna get some other bids from Kubota's or we're gonna just go with this?
Well, that's, that's state contract.
Well, I mean, you got state contracts on police cars and we get them just cheap from other places sometimes, so. That's true. We don't get them on the state contract. Have we put, have we put, have we put out for bid information on this size tractor?
No, no, because it was state contract, but I can call other dealers and see if they can get.
I would like to do that.
Alright, let's do this, let's move on. Regular vote, get the information for us by next Monday. On a two thousand seventeen tractor, we'll leave the Kubota four, we'll be buying it outright, using those two thousand fourteen spots. And we'll do a regular vote. If you don't follow me, they aren't, so they'll, does that make sense, guys? Shannon, Mike, everybody, Court. So, we can go out and get us some information by next Monday, we'll do a regular vote. Okay? Next, let's talk about the, the crew cab that was crashed and asking, how's Brian feeling? Is he too afraid for the soreness?
He is, he is. He just got some shoulder issue, nothing happened to his thumb. He's got something wrong with his shoulder, now he's going to physical therapy now, but he's doing good.
For those that don't know, we had a county employee who was driving this particular truck we're referencing, was coming in, coming north, crossing Highway one fifteen.
Yes.
At the bypass and a truck pulling a boat, T-boned it, correct? And totaled another truck, so.
I wonder if he got hurt or what he did.
Yeah, very.
Truck's a world business. My son saw it, he was, he was back there watching all of this.
So, it's gone and we got ten grand, ten thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents from our insurance company, correct?
That was less our deductible.
I always was the other guy.
Yeah.
Right, they are, the way that this will work, ACCG handled the claim, then they will segregate that with the insurance company that was at fault. We may get, we should get a check back for the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible that we paid.
What? Is that, is that standard policy? I mean, they have to go through this?
Any insurance. Any insurance company I've ever worked for, that's how it, that's how it looks like.
ACCG is going after it.
Yes.
They're gonna go after the other guy's insurance.
And then, of course, you know, they're, they're also, you know, they'll also be seeking, you know, subrogation with his workers comp claim and the whole nine yards, so. That number will actually probably be more like twelve thousand, six hundred, once we get that check back.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sure they're gonna go buy me a truck like a wreck for ten thousand, one hundred fifty seven dollars and go out there, long truck, they try to do that.
Oh five, two thousand four, two thousand five, M two.
They have two feet, he took it out of the five, they're just gonna give us twelve thousand, ten thousand dollars?
Hey, how many miles did it have on it? It was a high mileage.
Yeah, um.
I can't remember, but it was.
Hundred forty-three, if I remember.
How many doors got through?
I don't know.
I'm talking about the one you drive.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm wrong now, you're talking about right wing.
All right, you're asking permission to bid a replacement for this truck?
Yes, sir.
I think we, you know, we're gonna need a new truck.
Yeah, we're gonna need a new truck, I just disagree with what they're paying us for the one that we wrecked. I'm just, I'm just sorry, I'm. I just think they're, I just think they're lowballing us on our wrecked trucks.
No, the green, that was our insurance company, that was ACCG.
It was a diesel truck, right? You asked for a diesel truck, four wheel drive, two pin to corner.
You're on the board of managers over there, crank it up.
All right.
You're gonna change it, I will.
Guys, go out and bid.
Okay.
For a placement. All right. Lay off. Start your pencils, here we go. Talk about the dump truck.
Okay. Nineteen, nineteen eighty-one, um, let's see.
No, nineteen ninety-four.
Nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-four dump truck. That we'd use for, um, shoulder building, uh, all kinds of debris, uh, that we would use with, uh, two teams out. For, for, for getting the job done and everything. The engine absolutely just blew, we, we spent a little bit of money to make sure what it was, and, uh, we're looking at probably eight to fifteen thousand dollars starting, just to put a new motor in there. Okay, we got some front axle issues, some other issues with it, and I just don't feel, um, that we should put that much money into nineteen ninety-four vehicle. We went back and forth with this so many times, different mechanics, with different companies, and this, this, this is where we ended up, where it's not worth. And we could, we could sell that truck for parts, I had a couple people looking at it, that can help to go towards this also. Right now, we have just one, one dump truck which we use for shoulders and, uh, another one that's nineteen eighty-one, that's pretty old too. We have, we have a lot of old, old equipment, then we also have our spreaders that we use for gravel rolling and stuff.
Was the salt spreader available, was it able to hook up to this truck?
No, no, we, we have, we have three, three spreaders, um, that are made for, for spreading gravel, and then we have two small dump trucks that we use for small, small things, and those, that the plow goes on and the, and the new spreaders. Then we have the old eighty-one, and then the, this one that blew, and then the other one, uh.
The last time we bought dump truck was right before, uh, Doug got killed. We bought, uh. Was it two trucks and we took the body off of one and put a new spreader on one of those trucks? And we did something like that. We bought, I, I think, I, I think.
He found a good deal on a used one.
We found two good deals on used trucks, we bought those trucks, we took one off, took the body off of it, and took it and had a new spreader. I think, was it yellow or was one of those trucks yellow?
Yeah, we got one.
And the other one was red. Were both on max, we wanted both max trucks, I believe that's right, too.
We, we priced used trucks and. This, it's just not, it's just not paying off to get something new, you'd have to put more money into something. You know, we, we, we've done a lot of research on, on, on this, um.
Well, it's like one, like a dump truck's bigger than a fire truck, that's for sure. And I didn't make that slap towards you, David, but you take me.
Did they have three hundred thousand?
So if we can get some, take a mill, polyurethane, just put it in the back of the dump truck, and put a sump pump down in the back of it, drive it into a fire truck. Well, you can try that.
I think it's what we've been doing for years, sir. We ask them on one hand to, I mean, I, I just try to show our, but. This is something, I forgot to tell, I mean, we ask them more and more every year on these roads, I mean, we are doing a lot of road work and. They want, I got price, you're the truck man, is that too, is that higher or?
I don't know, I ain't never, I ain't never, I haven't pulled nothing like that in my life, I've always had fun with used stuff, I ain't never had a new truck.
What you, let me ask you, you have, I mean, um, we all got areas that we know a little more about, but, guys, what do you all like better, max or freight liners?
Uh, max, I'm, I'm, I do that max for, for dump trucks, if you own a dump truck, they pay you max.
We had, nice guy come in for a double, nice.
Uh, is that, is that, who was that price on the max three, two Z three?
That was, um.
That three horse down at Allison and Gainesville, that's my place.
It was the eight.
It wasn't, it's asking here to go out for bid, and so it'll make it official, so.
So what about, uh?
We still have the ability to, either turn it down or not.
What about maintenance on these trucks, I mean, do we, we can pull all that maintenance in, in our, that's how we get people to work on either one, a max or a freight line?
Oh, max, yeah, it's still mine, it's regular two.
Most of these are gonna be out of warranty.
Yes.
Guys, why don't we go out for bid and see what we've got, so we know what we're dealing with for sure, then we compare warranties to what we're now. And we can make that decision. Ms. Shannon, on this dollar amount. How, how long of bid process do we have to go out on this?
On both of the, on both of those items, you talked about bidding the crew truck and the heavy dump truck, both those would require advertised sale bids. It's a week period.
Advertised. All right, so advertised. All right. Then when you get those in, we'll bring them back at a later meeting, and we'll cross that bridge, figure out where we are. By that time, we'll have an update regarding our splotch funds and so on. All right. Well, our hat's you go south, we start talking about spending money, don't we? Wait till end us on a hand, don't they? All right, now we'll have a little fun. All right, um, Ms. Shannon, what, uh. What are you showing as far as next Monday's meeting?
Okay, we're gonna have, um, all the minutes that need to be adopted on the agenda, we'll have a proclamation for Black County Farm City Week. Clay Pilgrim from Russian Company will be here to present the FY twenty seventeen audit report. Then on the consent agenda, you'll have, um, renewing the parking rent concession agreement, ratification of the debris removal and disposal, uh, contracts, and the debris stating site contract, the amendment to the flood plain ordinance. Warrant blowers, uh, reappointment to the board of assessors, and, uh, the library, um, board appointment. And then on the voting agenda, you will have the land use, uh, issues of Mr. Love and the Chessers. You'll have yours. Are we gonna vote on the spring road paving before they go out to bid?
No, no, we don't even go out to bid, just go out to bid.
Okay, I didn't know if y'all wanted to vote on that list and then, but, okay. And then, uh, let's see. We'll have a voting item for the, uh, fielding authority, board appointments, and the tractor purchase.
All right.
And I believe that, um, Mr. Hand is gonna be here to present the.
Yes.
Splotch report, and then of course, Vicky will have her finance report.
All right. Commissioner, anything else?
Well, Mr. Bright, Mr. Goodger, here we go.
All right, you know, there's one thing that, uh, we talked about earlier right there that I wanna consider looking at. When we did the, uh, land use, uh, we didn't set up any fees or anything for appeals or anything like that, and I know that, uh, our consideration right there was that, uh, we knew that there was a lot of people that had land that was zoned, that they didn't, they didn't even know it was zoned, and they, they didn't know, so. We knew that we were gonna have to make some changes because it was based on the tax records and it was not necessarily on what it was being used at. So we've been kind of leaning it with, uh, our land use, um, appeals and everything, but I think that sometimes we have, um, appeals to us that are similar to the ones that we had here tonight, when, uh, I think that we need to have our, our staff look into, uh, maybe setting up a fee for those, and then if we, we can still waive the fees if we have a special situation, but.
One that's grand, grand fathered in.
One that had, that needs to be grandfathered in, but if we have some that, uh, obviously people are going to, uh, you know, it's profitable to them to do this, then we need to set up a fee for that. I think we need to have our, our staff to look into it and see about setting up fees for these appeals.
Well, I think we are starting to see a lot more of, I call them new transactions. I would like to see and kind of piggyback, Mr. Goodger was saying, I'd like to see what our surrounding communities and the other municipalities are charging, um, to go through the process, 'cause I believe we're probably one of the few that currently don't charge anything, and there was a reason for that, all right? We knew this was a process, and it was a new process, uh, when the county enacted land use, but, um, we're starting to see some new transactions, I think we're starting to, we're starting to grow outside the original purposes.
And on a side note, we discussed this two, three, four months ago, we need, we get about the square footage.
Tiny houses.
Do you have houses and stuff, you know, we need, we need to look at that one way or the other, so.
Take an old truck's deck and then put some.
I hate to do it, but.
Yeah. Well, uh, next work session, uh, a request being made up here, let's discuss the, uh, subject of tiny houses. I don't know if that's the right term, but that's what they're.
Yeah, square footage.
Home and garden, or do it yourself, somebody's doing something.
Three houses and a room.
And, um, Mike, if you would, send us out, I know you've got some data regarding, uh, maybe what other surrounding communities are doing or have said, um.
You know, surprised at what you find when you talk to other communities.
We'll send out the, we'll send out the deal.
I've had a, a few questions about what our meeting schedule will be the next meeting cycle. The work session would be, um, normally held on November twenty-seventh, which is the Monday following, uh, the Thanksgiving holidays, and I just needed, not that anyone has expressed any kind of preference or anything like that, but folks are starting to ask for the next agenda cycle, what the meeting dates will be, if we have any idea with that.
Thanksgiving will be on the twenty-third, um. Yes, we, work session twenty-seventh. Now, what we may do, because that is Thanksgiving week, let's move up, uh, any requests staff to be, you know, we normally say on the twenty-second, which is a Wednesday, let's bump that a little earlier, because I know the public should be going on vacation. So, uh, what do you suggest, Monday the twentieth or the seventeenth, which is the Friday before?
Monday the twentieth, this is fine.
Okay.
Call me in a minute, too.
Now.
Seasonal memory, not really hard.
Again, of course, with our land use advertisements, I have to, if we have any of those, will we have, we'll have those on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, I understand that there are, the planning board is hearing some things tonight. Okay, so we know what one we think. Go ahead and put that in as a, um, that'll be a work session and call me on the twenty-seventh.
What, you say about the twentieth of what, November, December?
No, to get the step, to get your step in.
Yeah, step in, as you know, the island of West. And, uh, now, one thing I'll say aloud, I know we're gonna be having, um, where are we on our, uh, sending our bids at, on Yonkers, Martin Preserve, uh, ballpark comment?
I asked Mr. Stover for an update, he was supposed to send me today, I have not seen that.
Because I know once we get into December, everybody's gonna have a busy time, but I'm gonna go ahead and reiterate from a previous meeting we had, um, and our board's goal is to have, along the vision of you guys, to have us have the opportunity to bid, to, uh, possibly address the bids prior to Christmas, so, uh. I'm just looking ahead here, where, I think, and I speak to the board, we would really love to pull that off, because once you get past December fifteenth, you're not gonna get anything done, everybody takes checks out for two weeks, so.
Mr. Stover, did you email him or call him or? I, I emailed him last week.
Okay, I didn't say that, I missed that one.
I, I didn't copy all, I emailed him and asked him for an update on project status on all our projects. Uh, and I, and, uh, I heard back from him this morning, and he said he would have me an update today, and I have not seen that update.
And Shannon, as far as December fourth, the same time, just a few more days, and let's see, what we see, checking, uh, whether, since we're gonna do a call bidding on the twenty-seventh, November, if that December fourth would be necessary, since we know we're gonna have another call bidding on or before the fifteenth, because of Yonkers Preserves bids company, so I'm just looking ahead here, um. What else can we beat around?
I had to turn over one of my.
Okay.
Just, I just wanna give permission, maybe from the board, just to explore, we're LED lighting for the gymnasium at the Park and Red. There's something to tell, and I'm talking about it. Um, the new, unless, we were up at the new gymnasium in Costco last week, they have, they have the LED lighting there, you can really, really tell the difference. Uh, the cost saving, you know, it's worth money upfront to do it, but the cost saving, I'm hearing is, is there, and those things are paid for themselves, so the natural installation, the cost of the heat factor and, and the power, and the, uh.
Just interior lighting?
Yeah, yeah, just interior.
In the gym.
And I know, like I shared with you, I know we've had some projects with G-Fod.
Right.
Where, I think we'll conference center, uh, the agency funded some of those new lighting, and they're like a ten year payback, but the investment pays for itself in ten years.
I was saying, so I told my tourist, let's explore that, let's see.
Place long, hold on, come on, I'm putting on.
Well, you know, we've had issues in the summertime up there, just, especially this last summer, with the AC, some of the heat up there, and these lights we've got up there now, get awful lot of heat, so, that's another factor, too.
Anything else?
We can do that before we get to new gym actions.
I know, I'll meet up before we leave. I, uh, a couple months ago, I was at, uh, Commerce Club having lunch with the DOT board, and Emily Dunn, who is our representative on the DOT board, was there, and she and I talked for a while, talked about some of the issues concerning some of the side streets on the bypass, and, uh, she wanted to come and look, and out of the blue, I spoke, she gave me a. And she wanted to come and look, and out of the blue, I spoke, she gave me a call, and she's coming tomorrow. And we're gonna look at some of those issues with, uh, Shepherd Drive, Foxham, and Virgil Hunt. Some of the destruction that went on while the contractor was using those side roads to access the bypass for construction. And we wound up with all the damage on our roads out there. So, uh, a meeting with her tomorrow, sometime around two, I think, is what she's trying to work into her schedule.
You know, I don't really want it Virgil Hunt, I mean, that's, that was really bad.
That's bad, and Dave has already got it marked up, and we know that those markings were done since that construction's been done, so, um... She wanted to come and look. I see no reason, nothing wrong with a board member on the DOT looking at projects that she might can have, but you never know. She is a representative on that board, so...
You know, we had a concern a few months back about the lighting out there at nine. Remember, on one fifteen and that?
Parkway, yeah.
Like, I didn't think anything about that then, but I've experienced that several years myself. If you're pulling off the testing gap, Valley Road on the one fifteen, first of all, it's really dangerous to try to turn the light there, because you got stoplight there. It's really, really, there's something bad's gonna happen there. But it's really dark today, it's really dark.
Well, we're gonna look at that, we're gonna come up and do Virgil Hunt, and that's Foxham and Shepherd Drive, and anything else in the rest of... I told her I would try to keep it to the bypass issue, Appalachian Parkway issues.
To piggyback, you know, about your comment, uh, this, let's see, next June, GDOT's gonna close down Boyham Bridge. And we had this conversation, I think, they're gonna put a temporary stoplight when they do that project next June at Tezna Gap, I mean, yeah, Tezna Gap Valley Road, Highway one fifteen. Because they recognize-
Oh, really?
That's gonna be temporary, but they recognize how dangerous that is.
So what are they putting temporary there for? Oh, for the, for the-
For the bridge bypass. See, Tezna Gap Valley Road's gonna be a temporary cut through.
I got you.
While they shut down, or they're gonna send traffic all the way up, off of seventy-five to Helen to come back to Cleveland, which makes zero sense.
Well, if we get a temporary one there, then maybe we can go to New Orleans, play that scene.
So, I'm just sharing that.
We have a part to give people something and then take it away from them, you have to get used to it now.
I understand.
Exactly.
Anything else? Alright, ladies and gentlemen, I hear-
I just want to, you all talked about, let's talk about the lighting up there, uh, at one fifteen, at Tezna Gap. On that west side, when you're, the security lights keeps going off and on, it doesn't stay on often. I've noticed that early in the morning when I come to work.
I mean, not in taste of being at a light.
So HEMC put that light up, so we'll follow up with HEMC. And, um, just keep it simple. I'll contact HEMC myself.
Well, I'm gonna also, tomorrow, I'm gonna reiterate to Ms. Dunn that, uh, especially at the Walmart, at the red light at Walmart, and the red light at, uh, where you turn to go into Cleveland. Somebody, somewhere, has got to recognize that that speed limit needs to drop about ten miles an hour there before somebody else gets killed there. Now, I'm just telling you, you can't go through, in the state that we live in, speed limit fifty-five, we all know that means sixty. Everybody that, yeah, unless you're a turner at sixty-five. But I'm telling you, you cannot go through a red light at an intersection at sixty, fifty-five, sixty miles an hour without eventually something happening. Now, why they can't recognize that that speed limit, when you come off of a hill now, if you're gonna sail on Appalachian Parkway to the first red light, why they can't recognize that when you approach that red light, that speed limit should change to forty-five miles an hour till you get through that intersection.
Well, if you recall, about six months ago, this board, and one of the few things we need along the city of Cleveland now, city of Cleveland, I think the school board, we all sent letters to the state. Saying between those two intersections, it needs to go to forty-five. They listen like a sack of sauce.
So that's why I'm gonna take a board member down there tomorrow, and, uh, if one of y'all wants to go down and come to about sixty-five, I'll give you a text by that time.
Alright, folks, we're done. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.